Seven oh six. I'll call this meeting to order. You want to take attendance, Julie?
Yep. Okay, Joe Abdullah. John Bonner. Greg.
Here.
Stephanie.
Can you hold one second? Whoever has their speaker on over there, please turn it off. Thank you. Go ahead.
Angela. Alex. Justin. Jen. Jane. Julie's here. Pete. And Mary. Thank you.
All right, we have eleven. At this point, I would like to welcome back. Stephanie Kolnick, representative from Roxbury to the Board of Education. It's been a few years and we're glad to have you back with us. All right. We would normally have a more impressive welcome, but the superintendent's not here. She's on here on the screen, so. Okay, at this point in time, I don't know if there's anyone who would like to provide public comment on agenda items, any member of the public would like to speak on a matter on the agenda. This evening, if so, please. Say something. I see no one in the room and I see no one putting up their hand raised thing on. On the screen, so we'll move on. Consent agenda, there are minutes of the Board of Education meeting of August twenty second, twenty twenty two. Does anyone have any reason to take it off or a comment? John?
In the last sentence of the treasurer's report. It was probably my fault because I was going off of my shorthand, but. The last sentence should read. Leaving our overall indebtedness at. Sixteen point. So sixteen mil- thirteen million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, so. It's not a percent and it's, it's not a low, so. It's actually thirteen point six seven five million.
I'm sorry, where does that number go in?
It's, uh.
Where it says eight?
Million dollar.
Oh, I'm sorry, as low as.
So the end of the last sentence, leaving our overall indebtedness. At. Thirteen point six seven five million.
Okay. All right, with no objection to that change, is anything else? Alex?
Yeah, I'd like to make a correction or an explanation under new business under for football. Uh, the what sentence says the price per player has increased by eight hundred and fifty thousand, but eight.
Two, eight.
Fifty dollars. I don't have a, I didn't bring my machine, I can't, so, um, thank you, thank you.
The number has gone down by fifty dollars. The eight fifty included uniforms. The number we got initially did not include uniforms. Uniforms were going to be, I think, six hundred dollars. And the. Fee per student was three hundred, so that came to nine hundred. Now it's eight fifty, so it actually went down fifty dollars, didn't go up eight hundred eighty, eight hundred and fifty.
Okay.
Clear everybody what I just said?
It's clear what you said, but I think this is reporting in the minutes here. This is a report by Mr. Parachi, so if he said that it went up to eight hundred and fifty. I don't know if we can change the minutes, but we would be, we could put in a clarification.
Okay, yeah, well, the price per student is going to be eight fifty. Opposed to nine hundred.
Okay, good, I think that's clear. Okay, with that clarification and John's amendment, are there any other comments on these minutes? All right, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as amended. Moved, seconded, moved and seconded, moved by Mary, seconded by John. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? I see no opposed, no abstaining. It's unanimous eleven to nothing. Those are adopted. Okay. COVID updates, does the superintendent wish to? Join us?
Yes, so I don't have many changes with respect to COVID. We've had a few recent cases. In fact, there was one staff member today, but we still remain extremely low. Both staff and students continue to follow the protocols in place. And we're updating every bit of information we have to the state. That's still part of the process. And again, we just keep reminding parents to keep students home if they're ill and monitor symptoms. The directors of local health are actually putting together kind of a cheat sheet for administrators and staff so that they. Nurses especially, so they can guide parents with all of the protocols. And as you know, those have changed, but again, we are, we are really still low and. We're doing really well at the school level, so a lot of this is happening in the community. And we hope it continues to remain low.
Good. With the price of oil, we're gonna have to keep the windows shut, so that's, that's all good news. No, just kidding on that. Okay, excellent. Well, I'm, we'll move on then to reports and recognition. I'll start with my report. If you recall, we had a tour of our building for Congresswoman Jonna Hayes. And it was led by our, two of our ag science students, J Lo Lantigua is an eleventh grader and Dan Millen is a tenth grader, both of them from Danbury, if I recall. And they gave her a tour of the, of the, of Chapag last spring. I was impressed with the knowledge these kids had and the, and the manner in which they. They, they, they did their program. I don't know how to tell you this, but. I can't read when I'm looking at my notes here. But so was Congresswoman Hayes. She was extremely impressed, so much so that she asked in August, she asked that they requested they attend a Connecticut agricultural event. On Wednesday, August twenty fourth, at Freund's Farm Market in Bakerie and in East Canaan. And they were there to just, and this forum was to discuss the importance of climate science agriculture. And how this could impact economic and human health in urban rural communities. If you recall, Congresswoman Hayes is on the House Committee on Agriculture. She's a member of that committee, and so this is very important to her. And so this was, there was this very important forum and they had other people there. It was also attended and hosted by Dr. Jewel Brana, who's from the United States Department of Agriculture. She's an Assistant Secretary of Agriculture. We also had. We had Dean Chawbury from Yukon's College of Agriculture, Health and Natural Resources. We had Commissioner Hurlbit from the Connecticut Department of Agriculture, Yukon and four H members and agriculture industry representatives. This was a big deal in Canaan, Connecticut. And these two students were invited there and they were, and I know, I know Ms. Lantigal was quoted in the newspaper and these kids. Went and represented our ag science program. They represented. Our school, our people, and they did a sensational job. And I just want to let you know. This is what we're doing here. We are really taking off and, and they did just a sensational job for us and. And that shows you because when, when I, when Congresswoman Hayes was here, I had, I had told her aide, her chief aide that was here, that they, they should call on us if we could be of any help to her efforts to. You know, make headway in agriculture, especially for an important industry in our state. And it didn't take but about a month or two, a couple of months for that call to, for that first call to come and our, and our kids did this proud. So I just wanted to, to mention that in my report. Yes, Mary?
Jonna told me that Dr. Jewel spent a lot of time speaking with our students. So they were an important part of this, this program that you put on. So that was pretty good.
I have no doubt of that because they acquitted themselves so well on that tour, talking at a high level about what they were doing in their program, what it meant to them, what it meant to agriculture. These were two impressive students and they're not alone because I've spent a fair amount of time there. I've been on tours of our facilities where the kids have basically told us what they're doing and. It's an impressive bunch of kids in this program. And it's, it really is doing Chapag proud and we've got a lot of terrific students in this building in all areas, not just agriculture, but the agricultural kids. I, who I've seen recently have done a wonderful job. And so, yeah, thank, thank you. I'm not surprised that they, that they were contributors to this program. This was a serious program, very professional, a lot of industry representatives there. And I think it's only a matter of time before we make our, our mark and show people what the great work we're doing here at, at Region Twelve. Okay, so if there are no further questions, I'm gonna turn this over to the superintendent for her report.
Thank you. We're preparing for, as you know, our open houses at the elementary schools this week, so Burnham is on the thirteenth and Booth on the fourteenth, WPS on the fifteenth. And I'm, I'm really anxious to meet some of our parents and I know this is always a, a positive night, especially for those parents who are new to a particular school or even the district. And for our staff who provide a brief overview of the curricular and instructional opportunities their children will have throughout the year. So that's, that's all set and then S V S follows soon after. So I will be at all the open houses and I'm sure they're all gonna go very smoothly. As you know, we had recently discussed the development of a co-op football agreement with. Tech, just to give you an update, we consulted with Tom Mooney, who made some minor changes. And Kerma weighed in as well, so we should be all set and ready for a sign off on all the changes and be good to go. So. It took a while, unfortunately, but when you have all the participating schools going back and forth. And between attorneys, that was the holdup, so we should be all set and I'll give you an update when that happens. We will be taking a look at our district calendar and I know I've heard that you've done that earlier in the year, which is good. We want to look at the use of our early professional development days and this was really based on a lot of input I received. From many of our staff members and our administrators as well. Perhaps one more day. Move to the beginning of the year would be helpful as they felt very rushed. They loved what they did this year. When we, you know, we focused on our goals and the safety and security. But there's, and of course, you know, new, new versions of our Eureka math, so there was a lot going on and a lot to do, but. I think one more day would have really helped and solidified everything. It's hard to cram it all in to two days, but we'll talk about that as we look at the calendar. I just kind of wanted to put that out there as an initial kind of informational piece because we'll be, we'll get, be getting your input as well. Um, let's see, what else? Personnel, we've had some appointments. Dale, cross-country coach at S V S is joining us. Michelle Cole, who's the new Agri Science Operations Assistant at S V S. Pat Desaro, the EdTech Specialist, who's going to be part-time at W P S. Megan Hodge is our new school nurse at Washington Primary. Anne Quackendos, the E A, the Educational Assistant, joining W P S. Kelly and Shay Corrigan, who will be new building sub, also at S V S. We've had two resignations, Eric Hansen, who's a reading tutor at Chapag. And James Wilson, who was filling in for a maternity leave, a tech head teacher, actually didn't even start in the position. And ended up resigning. So we will be filling that, of course. And then a transfer of a nurse. If you recall, I told you we had, because of the nurse resignations and retirement, we, we did make some moves. So Mary Clark, the school nurse, will be at Chapag from Burnham. And that's all I have this evening. Other than it was a crazy for me with flights, but other than that.
Excellent. All right, John, your report, treasurer's report?
Yes. The ink isn't even dry on my notes from our finance and operations meeting. However, we had some pretty significant. Items that we discussed and. From a financial point of view, the, the major item was. We've been investigating the possibility of solar. Generation. And how that would affect our energy costs. Greenleaf, who is, we're negotiating with. Is projecting one hundred percent of our. Usage would be generated by a solar farm and at zero cost. To the, to the, to the region. So, long story short, we have a potential of saving about three hundred and fifteen thousand presently per year. If we go with solar. And which is quite exciting. That's a significant amount of money. Alex will give you some of the details on the logistics and the feasibility in that, but. The other thing. Talking about energy consumption. When we reviewed the budget. Let me talk about the, we audited last year's budget. The, the audit, Charles Heavens is presently auditing our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. And. We did end up with a one point. Five million dollar balance, if you recall. However, we decided to encumber some of that, most of that, let's say, for the windows. For Chapag Valley School. And so we, we are currently, there's currently three hundred thousand. Remaining. From the last year's budget and that will, should be returned to the towns. As far as this year's, the current twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We had a few light items that. We, we projected and forecasted in March and April that are now a little bit underwater and. So there's gonna be a little bit of wrangling to do there to make up, moving money from accounts to make up for some of the shortfalls. The one in particular is the fuel oil, heating oil, propane and diesel fuel, which everyone sitting here can understand that. It was hard to project because no one knew just how far the. These fuel oils and propane would, would. Spin out of control, but hopefully will stabilize and we shouldn't experience too much of a shortfall, which is currently around fourteen thousand. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, John. Committee reports, Justin, curriculum, educational pro- programming?
Nothing new to report.
Okay.
Our next meeting is October twenty-fourth.
All right. Very good. I like that. At advance, Joe?
So our last Board of Directors meeting was in June, so this, the most recent one. Was September first, which was last Thursday. There was a presentation of. What went on at their all-agency day, which is their version of convocation. And there were some kind of neat facts that I wanted to share. They currently have six hundred and forty employees, which serves twenty-nine school districts. And the total of students that are served in that is forty-six thousand. Food service serves eighty-one hundred and fifty meals daily. Their transportation vehicles traveled over two million miles last year. Adult Ed served thirteen hundred and thirty-seven adults last year. Their first office was a three-room space in Danbury on Main Street. And luckily enough, their second office was the Old Hilltop Farm in Bridgewater, which is now the Seem Center. And then they purchased the Litchfield Building in nineteen seventy-eight and have been there since. Jeff also touched on the October final budget, which is going to have a surplus higher than they had predicted due to some of the grants that they've received. And they are in their final stages of closing on a property in Torrington for their new Head Start. Location and the, the city of Torrington has given them also the East Street School, which they have been in for the past four years. And that was all.
Okay. Finance and operations, Alex?
Yes, while John's ink hasn't dried, mine is still wet too. We, the exciting thing that, that, that happened at our meeting today was this solar. We had a company come and present some options to us. It was very preliminary. But they gave us three different options. Two of which offered zero risk to us and would generate. Over the course of twelve, twenty years, you know, six hundred thousand dollars to the good. One that planned, that, that did have a potential for some risk would have given us about a million six. Over, I think, a twenty-year period, over the life, you know, over the thirty-year period. But there's, would be some cost to us of hiring maintenance people, probably having to replace some of the equipment at some point. Probably run around two hundred thousand. But we still need to look at these three plans. Nicole needs to really crunch the numbers and figure out, you know, what makes the most sense for us. What kind of an appetite we have for this, but I think. The way the world is going, we need a solar presence. And I think it would be a good message to the community, to these, to the parents and to the students particularly. That, that we're taking the solar very seriously. It will cut down on hydrocarbon pollution. And we will have further information for you after we've had a chance to digest it and we will make a presentation at that time. Thank you.
Alex, I just wanted to add one thing because people might be wondering, you know, we have rejected solar many times. This is the first time the project is not going to be located on the roof of the building. They're actually gonna build a field. There are a couple of ways it could be done, but one way is a field down the hill here. And what they would be doing is. If it costs, we, it takes approximately a million kilowatt hours of electricity to run our four school buildings and the central office. And what they talked about doing is being able to generate that much electricity here on our little solar farm. And then, and we would be putting it into the grid directly, not through the school. We're not powering the school, we're putting it into the grid and then receiving credits. For it, so we would be generating that much solar energy, enough to power all of our buildings. And, you know, there's a lot of possibilities here and this is the first time that it's been something that we could conceive of happening. And I think that's what I wanted to just underline what, what Alex said. I mean, this is a big deal and we, we're gonna hope to find a way to make it work. That would be nice if we no longer were, if we were generating enough energy here to not have to. Expend the million kilowatt hours a year it takes. That'd be a great thing. And there's a whole bunch of new tax incentives that have come in with the new statutes that have just been passed at the federal level and so this is now making this really achievable. Okay, sorry for interrupting there and I. Mary, yeah?
I, I just want to know, did we ever look at wind energy, energy? You know, the big turbines, wind turbines? Anything like that? Because that may be something that.
Yeah, Don can tell you what we've done.
Oh, okay.
Back sometime, we, we did look into wind. It takes seven mile an hour consistent wind to turn a turbine. And, and we don't have that type of a consistent wind. There was an effort by a company in Connecticut to, to utilize lower velocity winds, but the effort failed and, and did not produce any opportunities for us.
Yeah, this is the reason why they say that the best height for a wind turbine is about four hundred feet. It can't be higher than that because air, aircraft fly, their minimum altitude is five hundred feet, so. But you need to be up high enough to get those, those steady wind and we just don't have it at a, at a height that we could actually install on our property. So, yeah, that was. Well, there's that too, but I think the big problem is we just don't have the capacity, the wind here to do them. Okay, so I'll move on to strategic long-range planning, Julie?
Yes, we did have a meeting tonight as well and we had several administrators with us. Lori was on the phone, Teresa, Mike and Don. So we had a good meeting to kind of reset where we are and. We essentially have set fairly solid our strategic priorities. We did make one minor change and added the word safe to our priority of diversity, belonging and well-being. Where we need to now work is looking at actions and measures. So I'm gonna regroup with Lori and we're gonna regroup with Richard Lemons, our consultant, and see where we stand with that. And then work on that probably in small groups and then we want to present it to the whole board. At a retreat and I know our retreats have been. We haven't had many lately, but that would be the ideal place to go over it and we still have a little ways to go get there. So we're just kind of regrouping and, and getting things going.
Give me some advanced warning, we'll have a retreat for that.
Okay.
Most definitely. Okay, very good. So we can move now on to new business. And the first item on here is reflection on the school opening and video. Is someone going to take that or are we just gonna be watching a video?
Well, no, I, I will start just. Oh, I'm sorry. Couldn't be. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. No, I'll, I'll just. Very quickly emphasize again that we, you know, we've had a really positive opening to, to school and. For the most part, I think it's looking a lot like pre-COVID and people are feeling that, kids, families, staff. And Ben puts together a video because I think a picture is worth a thousand words annually of, of the opening days. And this year, as you know, I had mentioned the Teacher of the Year, Catherine Brooks spoke to all of our staff during convocation, so I know he's included a piece of that. So we'll up and take it from there.
Thank you.
When I step in front of my students, or as I like to call it, when I step on stage, something inside of me goes off. And I perform to meet any objective that's in front of me. Now, it's not a dog and pony show, not at all. It's not when I think someone's watching me from the hallway. It's only when I see those eyes staring at me, looking for direction and guidance, that this light bulb goes off and I come alive. And then I do everything in my power to keep those students engaged. Yes, I've been known as the running teacher who makes the kids run all the time or the workout teacher who makes the students rotate from corner to corner, recite in their multiplication facts for two minutes. But the truth is, no matter what my morning was like before school started, no matter what PPT I have during my only prep, the three phone calls I have to make at lunch and the staff meeting that I have after school, all of that is suspended in time as soon as I start teaching a lesson. My entire focus is on the lesson at hand. The students see me, hear me and know that I'm there with them in that very moment for every lesson. My distractions are on hold and I perform. And students respond. Like I said, they match my enthusiasm. Now, this sometimes backfires because I tend to teach right up to the last minute, kind of like the curtains are closing and the credits are rolling. But I have to say, most of the time, I keep their interest to the very end because they feel my excitement when I'm teaching a lesson and they know, they know that I care about them. Yes, we've all heard the TED Talks and the pep talks about keeping students engaged and interested. And you know what? It's true. Students just want to feel as though you want to be there, that you really want to teach them that lesson on square roots or how to conjugate a verb or that the Silony makes them thou say its name. And as I say that, I have to pause for a second and take you back many years to my oldest daughter, when she came home from school more than one time and said, Mom, the teachers are so excited because a break was about to come up, either a holiday or what have you. She said, they are so excited because they didn't want to be there and they're so ready to be home. And I stopped and I said, they said that to you? She said, yeah. What message did that send? Probably not a very welcoming one and inviting one. And I told myself I would never, ever send a message. I vowed never to send a message. I didn't want a student to think that I didn't want to be in that classroom, that I didn't want to teach them that lesson. They remember. Now, I know I'm preaching to the choir. Like I said, this district is above many. But sometimes a reminder or pep talk is all that's needed. Trust me, I get bogged down by the many hats that we wear in this profession. But I always remind myself, the students are watching me, matching my enthusiasm. So I make sure to give it all when the curtain rises. Remember Region Twelve, we are all superstars. We have and always will rise to every occasion, every hurdle, every wall put in front of us. And I'm so honored and blessed to have been a part of an unbelievable cast of colleagues and friends. Now I invite you to take a deep breath and get ready for your new school year. May be filled with laughter, love, support and passion. And just remember, no curriculum, no PD, no technological device can ever take the place of your presence on your stage. So with that, I say thank you for your time and love you guys.
Great presentation. And that's who we put in the classrooms. Okay. We'll move on then to the second item. Dr. DeBrito is going to take us through this partnership with University of Pittsburgh Institute for Learning.
Good evening, everyone. I really do miss Kathleen. She had to be pulled away to Colorado where her husband works. We do miss her. But what a great representation for, for Region Twelve. So I am here this evening. I was here a year ago talking about the Institute for Learning and this partnership with the University of Pittsburgh. And I've returned to give you an update. And so all last year, we did have online sessions with consultants. And the focus was for English and K-12 teachers participated. We had multiple groups, K-five participated and six through twelve participated as well. There are sessions that they hold with administrators in advance of the sessions that they have with teachers. I'd incorporate, um, sorry. Background like that. It incorporated teacher videos in the classrooms and us reviewing those with consultants. I'm happy to share that this year, they will come in person to visit all the schools in the district and continue the work that we started. Our focus has been on accountable talk, which really has to do with high-level discourse in the classroom where students actually share their thinking. And we're elevating that to rigorous learning as well. And we're starting with the six-twelve math teachers this year. So tomorrow's our first session with administrators and our consultants. So happy to share and I'll be returning to continue to give you updates.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're, we're moving on to the third matter under new business, which is the planetarium. We're going to have a presentation. Mr. Shell is going to talk about this and what our program is and what we're doing. And then we're going to go get a chance to actually see the planetarium and there'll be a short presentation there.
Well, good evening, everyone. Soon I'll turn you over to our technical expert, Mr. Allen, and soon you'll be able to visit the facility. And I think you'll find that to be amazing and for sure. I remember the first time when I was exploring Region Twelve, I was getting a tour of the campus by the superintendent. Of course, I was wowed by a lot of things. I said, the barn, the greenhouse, the pool and the mall and so forth. And I, when I got to the, and she's, lady said, by the way, we, Megan said, um, we have a planetarium. And I was like, stop, I can't take anymore. Maybe I said, is there no Starbucks or something like that? I don't know. But the facilities here, and mind you, I come from schools that have facilities that are, that are fairly nice. The facilities here are just amazing. And for us to have a planetarium is very unusual for a high school. And that happened from the efforts we know of this board, the time, the money, the commitment that you put in to resurrecting the space is just incredible and we appreciate it. Now, visiting the planetarium is, it's going to, it's own reward. And you'll see that. And that'll be true for our students and our faculty. Its sights and sounds will certainly beguile everyone. Beyond that, though, we just want to naturally maximize its impact on curriculum and instruction and on student engagement. So I just want to say a few words about the vision we're trying to build and how we want to use the space for those purposes. First of all, there are some students in our science honor society. And under the supervision of Mr. Hermans, they're going to be piloting an astronomy club during the Spartan period in our new schedule. And students can join this club and utilize the facility and develop their interest further. And then teachers have now been apprised by Mr. Allen of the facility's diverse content because it doesn't just cater to astronomy. You know, there's content in there that students can be immersed in, that touch on nearly all of the earth sciences. Geology, oceanography, meteorology and other related sciences, too. And classes can sign up. We have a sign-up sheet from all of our schools. Teacher can bring a class in and visit when relevant to their units of study or for, you know, a treat. And Mr. Allen will run those meetings. Now, I, teachers understand that we have to use the planetarium as more than a big movie projector, right? They're going to privilege content that immerses students and experiences that could not be duplicated in the ordinary classroom setting. The goal is to utilize the technology to design lesson experiences that would not be possible without it. For example, this technology, this planetarium could support student research, for example, into the biological and behavioral features of deep-sea creatures in an immersive way without needing a scuba apparatus. So those are the kinds of connections that we want to make with, for our students to maximize the impact of the space. And then finally, as we look to continually develop science education here at Shapag, we're building a vision around how to embed the planetarium's offerings into existing curriculum, of course, but also factor it in to choices we make when we propose and develop new course offerings. And the science department is very interested in developing new electives that can capture the interests of the widest possible array of our students. Electives in astronomy, of course, but the earth sciences, sports medicine, genetics, so forth, all lend themselves nicely to what students can experience under that dome. So thank you again for giving us, you know, another tool that we can leverage to really connect kids to some powerful learning. And Mr. Allen's the real expert. I'm going to turn this over to him. He's going to give you some of the technical specs and background of what the space is capable of. And then I think we're all going to be invited to go see a show in the planetarium. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
So the room off the mall, it's more than just a planetarium. It's an interactive multimedia theater with access to telescopes and institutions around the globe. And it can feature full dome, three hundred sixty-degree experiences, not just of outer space. There are no limits to the type of content that can be projected and interacted with. The DigiStar Cloud Library connects to sites such as the Griffith Observatory, the Adler Planetarium, U.S. Air Force Academy, Denver Museum of Nature and Science, China Science and Technology Museum, European Southern Observatory, Strasbourg Observatory, EC1 Poland, the Science Center of Singapore and others, allowing us to connect with those who create and share fresh content on a daily basis. DigiStar delivers diverse and continually growing content into our theater, including high-resolution planetary services, sky surveys and massive astronomical databases. Some of the shows we currently have in our three hundred sixty-degree full dome is The Journey to the Center of the Milky Way, Search for the Edge of the Solar System, From the Earth to the Universe, A Future of Human Space Exploration, International Space Station, Off the Earth, For the Earth and Beyond, NASA's Journey to Mars, Oasis in Space, Incredible Sun and Two Small Pieces of Glass, The Amazing Telescope. And what I'd like to show is in a little bit, it's called Losing the Dark. The synopsis is, starry skies are a vanishing treasure because light pollution is washing away our view of the cosmos. It not only threatens astronomy, it disrupts wildlife and affects human health. Yellow glows over cities and towns seen so clearly from space are a testament to the billions spent in wasted energy from lighting up the sky. Losing the Dark is a public service announcement. Planetarium Show, a collaboration of Loch Ness Productions and the International Dark Sky Association, introduces and illustrates some of the issues regarding light pollution and suggests three simple actions people could take to help mitigate it. The show gives planetarium professionals a tool to help educate the public about the problems of light pollution. Planetarians are audiences ways we can all work together to implement responsible use of lighting. That's about six minutes long. So in addition, it just shows astronomy section, which is basically a three-dimensional map of the recorded universe. So you can essentially fly over Shapag, fly over New York City, Tokyo, anywhere on the planet with also the ability to control time and adjust how many hours or minutes you're experiencing, allowing you to watch the moon float quickly across the sky. Clouds, you will see accurate depictions of the cloud formations current with the local weather data. So you can fly across nearby moons, planets and stars, as well as large asteroids and black holes. So today I'll take you through the solar system, starting from Shapag, taking us to the sun and working our way outwards. Then the Mercury, Venus, Earth, Moon, Mars, Jupiter, Saturn, Uranus, Neptune and orbit around the solar system. And then we're going to go back to Earth. And lastly, we have the virtual telescope, which is called Sky Surveys, which are essentially have access to hundreds of different sky surveys. So the term sky survey originates from an all-sky photographic atlas that was originally used to produce the first version of this guide star catalog. So a survey is created from telescopes in both hemispheres to comprehensively map the night sky, to allow scientists to examine the history and structure of the universe and probe the physics of black holes. It is stitched together giant panoramic of the entire sky as seen from Earth. So the most recent sky surveys have been created using the Hubble telescope. Astronomers have measured the distance to the farthest cosmic object known to humankind, a galaxy that lies thirteen point one billion light-years away. Imagined last year by Hubble's new Wide Field Camera Three, the galaxy takes researchers back to a mere six hundred million years after the Big Bang. So we can only imagine how the sky surveys will be expanded using the new James Webb Telescope. Sky survey can be simulated as if we're looking from Earth or from space like the Hubble or James Webb Telescope. And when we are in there, I'll, I'll find a sector of the sky and we'll slowly zoom in. As the image grows, you will see the image that is projected on the dome increasing quality as the stitched images get larger and larger, allow you to see more detail. So just a little warning here, make sure you are holding tightly onto your seat. Sometimes the way the images rotate can give a slightly dizzy feeling as the orientation starts to shift. Yeah, make sure you hold tight. And then just lastly, I want to touch on the surround sound systems, which is the state-of-the-art Behringer Sound System. And so rather than being a dead silent trip throughout our galaxies, I located a recording of what it sounds like on Mars. So when we fly through our solar system, you will hear what I believe enhances the experience and brings in all the senses. Also classical music, being a fan of Two Thousand One, a Space Odyssey, I love the way classical music can also bring the viewer into the experience. So I have a recording of various pieces of Mozart, Bach and Tchaikovsky and others that, again, keep the experience alive and rather than being what it would actually be like in space, it's a little bit more of an exciting way of moving through the stars and hopefully engages the audience on another level rather than simply a visual one. So, um, other than that, there's really just the James Webb Space Telescope images that are coming in on pretty much a daily basis that we have access to, as well as the new Artemis launch that's going to the moon. There's actually going to be projecting that on a three sixty dome and we have access to that as well. So I'm excited to show it to you guys and I hope you enjoy it.
Okay, before we go to do this, we are, we, we had an executive session scheduled for tonight that's been canceled. And so we're not going to have that. So after we do this presentation, we are going to come back here and adjourn. There's nothing else on the agenda. And after that, I do want to, we're, we're going to, we're going to go through that. So I, at this point in time, I think we, we can only take people who are here in person into the planetarium.
Mind if I ask this question about the planetarium or do you?
Well. Well, if we're going to ask questions, why don't we, yeah, I don't think we're going to come back and talk about it. So, yeah, please.
I just wanted to know a little bit about the program SLU in particular, the students.
Sure.
I hear you talking a lot about the different programs, but in particular, that one is something of interest.
Correct.
And I would like to know, do we have teachers that are all participating in this? Because that is something that I would hope that we would encourage.
Yeah, as far as I know, anybody can.
And the students. So I just kind of wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Yeah, good question. Thank you, Jen. Now, the SLU package is going to be an important part of the astronomy experience here at Shapag. And negative purchase a certain amount of licenses for students and faculty to access, which is, this is in addition to, I think, the planetarium that would happen outside of the planetarium. As you know, there, students under faculty supervision can actually get telescope time online and look at images. Now, those images are not, are, are inferior to what you can get from the web telescope and other places online. But for students that want to do, let's say, real meaningful scientific research, and this is not out of the question. Like I was just talking to Mr. Hermans about this. So assume a student wants to track a quasar, for example, and see what changes happen over the course of a certain amount of time. I know some of the time scales are, you know, stagger our minds, but this can be done with certain astronomical objects. That could be a research project for a student to use the SLU license to look at things in the sky and come up with data and actually contribute to real scientific research. So the SLU project is going to dovetail nicely with the planetarium. And right now, we have one teacher who started the training online. And we had three students who wanted to participate in piloting an astronomy club last year. We sadly graduated, but we have new recruits coming up now. And I think that astronomy club that I mentioned at the beginning of my talk will not only work well with planetarium, but also with the SLU telescope access license.
Elementary, middle, elementary, all.
There are all levels of teachers have access to it. Well, I can't speak to the other schools. I'll try to find out for you. Well, we want to get the most out of those licenses and I re-recognize the opportunity. It's something that, and this is no pun intended, fell out of the sky on us in a good way. And um, I'm trying to match and we will match the resource with teachers who are available uh to use it and train students on it. Yeah, and I'll, I'll keep the board posted on that as that unfolds.
Yeah, when I last talked with Megan about this, which was right after the eighth grade commencement ceremony, um, she said that the, that access to SLU was available to every student in the system, elementary, middle, and high school. We, we understand that, but it takes, it, yeah. Yes, no, you're right to ask the question and we should be utilizing it. And in fact, uh, the critical, the critical part of this thing being a success is for someone to own it, but for other people to get involved at the, at the, at the every school. We need this in every school. Uh, and um, that's ongoing. It's a work in process. Okay, I'm sorry. John, you had a question and also Stephanie.
Yeah, and maybe Teresa could follow up on this also to add to her thought. How about electives at the high school level, something like that? Course, course, courses offered.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's forward thinking and I appreciate that sentiment. And that accords with some of the suggestions I made earlier about how we can think about this resource when we're planning what kinds of electives we want to bring to the, for, for the board's consideration in the near future. And you know, our science department wants electives that can leverage the planetarium and also that can bring all different kinds of kids into science learning. We have a lot of strong science classes right now. Many of them are AP, many of them at a very high level, which is wonderful. That's part of who we are and always will be. But we'd also like to bring in a wider array of students who have different interests, maybe not always tied exclusively to AP. And I think the planetarium could be a great catalyst for that. Not the only catalyst, but certainly a great catalyst for us, uh, how we decide which electives are right for us. Yes. Did you say art immersion?
Yeah.
I hope there are. And right now I need to, um, I need, I need to do more research on that. I think you're raising a great point and I'm not equal to the task of answering you right now. But, um, you know, whenever we talk about these things that are STEM related, you know, people say STEAM, right? They put the A in because they recognize that the arts and the humanities are something that we can. So yeah, I mean, I'm sure that there are going to be, I'm, I'm sure there's content that will play out very well in a panoramic way, but that doesn't touch only on scientific ideas and that has to do with, you know, maybe you put what, Van Gogh up there and look at Starry, Starry Night and have art students work on it. Is an idea that is really, um, really cool and shame on me. I didn't think about it. So I'm glad you raised it.
Okay.
Well, um, so far each, uh, I wrote to Ms. Judd and Ms. Rue, uh, Dr. Rue, and um, shared the link to a sign up sheet with them along with a website that lists all the um planetarium's current content and invited them to share with teachers and have teachers sign up to come here and use the planetarium. The staff have, has not been in the space yet formally, and that's something that we're excited to do very soon. And certainly, um, that applies to all our faculty and all our schools. Yeah. So I don't think, we have not set up um an orientation for teachers in there yet, which is a grand idea. Yeah, I propose that when I talk to my colleagues um, next, I say, by the way, the invitation is standing and open to all teachers to come and get an orientation and learn about the space. So we'll have to be sensitive to that.
Yeah, Mary.
Do you remember that the Hubble telescope was born in Danbury, Connecticut?
Hmm.
And a lot of those um engineers are still with the company.
Well, we're always looking to survey the community for expertise and resources and time to come in and talk about things that matter. And uh, that sounds wonderful. Maybe I'll connect with you later and get the, the contact info. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Are we ready to see the planetarium?
Let's go to the stars.